I'd like to call the board on this public hearing for the town of Shandaken. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America in two of our which is hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Storms will be a little late in emergency. But we're here tonight. Joyce, could you read the notice, please?
Sure. Please take notice that pursuant to Resolution 11414 adopted by the Shandaken Town Board on September 8, 2014, a public hearing will be held on Monday, October 6, 2014 at 6:30 prior to our regular monthly town board meeting to hear those all present for or against on the subject of the proposed zoning change from Main Street to Pine Hill, whereas the entire north side of Main Street from Maple Avenue extension to Academy Street would be changed from Hamlet Residential to Hamlet Commercial. Board member Bernstein?
Here.
Board member Higley?
Here.
Board member Malloy?
Here.
Board member Storms? Supervisor Tanner?
Here.
As explained in public notice, we have a public hearing to hear those for or against changing of the zoning on Main Street and Pine Hill. We have the maps, the law, everything is located up here. Now, I did not receive the language from the attorney for the actual enactment of this tonight, and we still are awaiting county comments. So, we will open this public hearing and we will keep it open for the remainder of the month long if people wish to send written comments or statements. Essentially, yes, the north side or the south side of Main Street in Pine Hill and the Hamlet of Pine Hill is entirely commercial from one end of Main Street to the other. On the opposite side of the street, where you have the Pine Hill Arms and Pine Hill Roost and New Zephyr Restaurant, those are the only buildings zone commercial on that stretch. Of note is the building called The Wellington, which is a large lodging establishment that used to be in operation many years ago up in the corner of Academy Street. Also of note are the fuel storage facilities for Botini Gas are currently zoned residential. Tigerwood Doors operated by Phil Dormstadt, again, a commercial operation located in a residential zone. And we also have, again, other large structures including the Orchard Park House, the Smith Park or the Smith Brothers Drumstool. They were boarding houses previously and are, again, located in residential districts and we feel that we could get more attention if there was a change. So, that's it in much of. I do have one question being that Mr. Brewer is here from the planning board. Zoning map. You have a lot on the opposite, on the corner of Bonneview and Main. I'm looking at the zoning map and that appears to be zone commercial. If you want to look at the map, this is the one he gave me. You have, you look, you look. So, we may retract this lot from the change. All the way up here, you'll see here's Bonneview Avenue, and that's that last lot, and it seems to be blue going across the street there, across Birch Creek.
I was looking at it, it was diffy, so.
You see it there? So, that's lot, that is lot 42, 42, 14, something like that. Yeah, Lot 14.
Just check the bigger map. Did you, did you check the bigger map?
I didn't check the bigger map, just, but I have a PDF electronically that I can expand when I zoom in on it. It's blue right up to Bonneview Avenue.
Oh, okay.
So, if that's the case, we may just amend this to remove that parcel because it's already zone commercial. Here. This is Bonneview coming here. See, this is Main coming, Bonneview into Pine Hill Road, and that's the lot.
Oh, okay. Turned west, crossed.
Yeah. It's on the other side of the street.
So, it's already commercial?
It appears to be on our map. We'll take a closer look at the actual map upstairs and verify that. Depending on what we come out with, we'll either remove it or keep it. That'll open it up to the public.
Everybody affected was notified and including all the other property owners?
They were all spoken to directly, up in the main street. As far as I know, there's no, we've, we don't have the same rules as the planning board.
No, that's right.
Put out public notices, we told everybody about it, we did, we've been discussing this for two, three months there.
I spoke to somebody who said he didn't know any about it.
And that wasn't him.
Who was it? Bill Dormstadt?
Yeah, I didn't see Bill. But I presume that with his commercial operation.
Yeah, no, he hit my garage door a couple of days ago and I mentioned it to him. He didn't seem to know.
Yeah, well, because when we went around, again, he's out of work the other day. But was, was he in favor?
Didn't know much.
Yeah, if it's in compliance, so. Well, that calls for the public hearing.
I just wanted to say, I talked to several people from Pine Hill and everyone seemed in favor of it.
Yeah?
No, no.
The comments aren't usually pretty.
No, always positive. There were a few positives, sort of, you're right, it improved business and money, it was a good opportunity.
Oh, really? I agree with that.
There's nothing negative.
And it should have been done a long time ago. No, it didn't. On the left side, the other side, where it's more of a residential area. Well, this is part of parsing conversations, right? A large building that's mostly mature. County currently owns it at a tax price of seventeen thousand. Generally, maybe by now it's made to pay the tax to the building conscious of the county to know, he's not willing to pay the seventeen for this, it's not working, he feels the building needs to be done. Which one? This is the one next to the Smith Brothers Building?
Oh, yeah.
It's tough to see because it's behind a bunch of hedges.
Yeah, alright.
But, two things. I actually brought Bob Cowb over there. Is that the county owns it? The county owns it right now for taxes. I brought Bob Cowb over there with the idea of looking at it as a possible museum location and relocating the museum from Academy Street onto Main Street. It does need a lot of work. It would take a tremendous amount of effort, a lot of grant writing, a lot of work with the Historic Preservation Office, but there are monies available to revamp, but being that it's an old historic structure and a historic hamlet, and I think, you know, it would be a nice addition to Main Street, bring more attraction, if you've got more of your community activities along Main Fair. The other option, again, we've talked about the parking situations in Pine Hill, and we have, where two has worked up this idea of a nose-in parking plan along the street. Again, Eric and I went to many of the landowners that would be directly affected by taking up parcels of, portions of their land to create these parking spaces, so we can widen the road to an actual width instead of the horse and buggy width that we have now. And everybody signed off, everybody was good with it. The question is, do we want to look at possibility if the parkhouse property is available, acquiring that from the county and making a new municipal parking lot in Pine Hill?
Back up, Tony.
Yep.
Did you visit the Bob Cowb museum?
Yeah.
What would it cost the town to purchase that museum?
I didn't, I didn't go any further, I just figured we're sitting here talking about Pine Hill and it's very preliminary discussion.
Price tag?
No, again, we want to, we want to look into taking this over at all, then, yeah, I will inquire seriously of the county to see about what they would ask for in return to have the municipality take it over.
What kind of shape is it?
It's rough.
Yeah.
Oh, it's rough.
Yeah.
It's gutted inside. I walked up on that porch and I ran off. I was worried I was gonna fall through. It's the boards of Creighton like this, and it's all boarded up, it's all secured, there's no problem with that. But, it's a beautiful old building.
Yeah.
But this point in time is not the town's issue.
We do need more parking than Pine Hill also. As it gets busy, we are getting more.
No, right now, it's not the town's responsibility and it's sitting there. Eric was actually gonna contact county because his only issue is that the hedges are growing onto the road and impeding vision and becoming a problem when they plow, so we want to know about cutting those hedges off, which I thought, again, was a better idea, maybe somebody will get, county will get a taker if they can see that there's a building there, instead of just a bunch of hedges. So, something to think about, put in the back of your head.
Again, yeah, right, too. We could do that.
When would the new zone go into effect, if it actually sort of puts in place?
It would go, if we, again, I'm assuming that next month we will have the resolutions, again, the attorney who's working on it.
Right.
We'll have them next month. November 5th is our meeting. It's then generally within sixty days. It actually goes into effect when the Secretary of State signs off on it.
Which would be that November 5th meeting, likely?
November 5th, we would more than likely probably adopt and then pass that. Joyce, you can send it over on the sixth. So, within two months by January, you'd be, it would be resolved.
Next, he's got a county that's signing a fund motion.
Oh, county, we just have to reference the county and see what their thoughts are. From what I've heard from Dennis, well, he's more favorable, he says it's a good idea, smart. Again, we're just mirroring what was there. Pretty great.
Alright.
Let's take a little break here, come back in a second. Got some time.
Get some wings?
I don't think so.
You should have ordered right here.
Should have ordered.
I should have wings and pizza.
Get some wings and pizza, come on. That'll make you feel better.
Get a little acid.
Board member Bernstein?
Here.
Board member Higley?
Here.
Board member Malloy?
Here.
Board member Storms? Yeah, Supervisor Tanner?
Here. Watch me, I'm split up tonight, so there shouldn't be any jibber jabber. Entertain a motion. That doesn't mean it starts over here. Entertain a motion to approve the previous town board meetings.
Okay.
All in favor? Be opposed? Thank you. Supervisor's financial report. Supervisor's report for September 2014. Time water fee sixteen thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars forty-five cents. Ambulance fees seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars five cents. Ambulance donations, two hundred dollars. Police fees, sixty dollars twenty-five cents. Phoenisha library electric, sixty-six thirty, sixty-six dollars thirty cents. Phoenisha library rent, three hundred dollars. Billing permit fees, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Town clerk fees, five hundred and two dollars thirty-five cents. Dog licenses, ninety-seven dollars. SBA cell tower, eight hundred sixty-five dollars seven cents. Justice fees, sixteen thousand nine sixty-one. Emerson fundraiser for recreation, two thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars, a total of forty-five thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars and forty-seven cents. Communications. Month of October 2014. Twenty fifteen budget. Met with the town accounting and the tentative budget is done as best we can to this point. There are still a number of outline issues to be attended to, but those numbers won't be available until after this meeting, so some things may change as always. Here are the major points of different budget lines. Fund balance. As I've reiterated for several years, the closer we get to actual expenditures, the less carryover we have from year to year. This year, the account is estimating approximately forty thousand dollars left to carry over for next year, meaning that on more than two million dollars in anticipated expenses, we are within forty thousand dollars of the actual expenditures. I don't want to use it all, so I'm proposing using only thirty-five thousand dollars to help offset the taxes. This has the most dramatic impact on taxes as we drop eighty-five thousand dollars in offset revenue. Ambulance revenues. We're seeing the drop-off in revenues from the ambulance department, so the chief, myself and board member Storms met last week with the billing agent, ComStar, to investigate the loss in revenues. There were several relevant revelations that came to light, most surprising that our service in the past had been billing out approximately four to five percent of their bills to uninsured patients with a minimal return through a collection agent associated with the previous billing company. We are now billing out nearly twenty percent out to uninsured with a zero dollar return as of last week. We will look to get the same service from ComStar, meaning Collection, who has sent us information on this already, but with the caveat that the best-case scenario, we may be able to recoup at least five percent of those bills. There are others as well who are not paying, but many, many or most of the bills recouped from the insurance companies. Call volumes seem to be fairly steady, and there are issues with the electronic reporting system at times, but we hope to get a better answer to these later this week. That being said, I'm proposing dropping expected revenues for the ambulance by thirty-five thousand dollars. Library. Library will be vacating our building shortly and we have to drop expected revenue until we can find a new tenant. Contrary to popular opinion, there is no deed restriction or covenant restricting the use of the building. I can explain in detail, although we have visited this issue before and we can discuss what to do with this building. Healthcare is going up near seven percent, but this is not a hard figure, but an estimate from her agent. She did update us that the cost could go as high as thirteen percent or as low as four percent. It will remain unclear as the healthcare providers do not provide solid figures until within thirty, sixty days of the renewal, which is January for us. She did not have the numbers available for dental or eye care yet, but we should have hard figures on all these by mid-October. Recycling is all over the place. The costs proposed by the recycling agency are under dispute right now and the town supervisors have made a request to county to address this by simply increasing the tipping fee rate by two dollars per ton, which works with figures provided by the agency. Legislature is already balking at supporting our approach for some unknown reason. Under the current proposal, the agency proposed creating new fees for rental of recycling boxes for the towns and large increases on both the tipping fee and pole charges, which would increase our costs anywhere from ten to twenty-five percent. The agency is also asking the towns to enter into a long-term, ten-year, open-ended contract for their services, but the contract has no hard figures associated with it. We will have a resolution regarding this tonight. Employees. I've placed a two percent increase for all general employees and no increase for elected officials and no increase for police outside of a proposed five hundred dollar increase for the new chief to twenty thousand five hundred, which is still a two thousand five hundred dollar reduction from the previous chief. I ask that you recognize that the employees are contributing more to their healthcare costs and these costs are rising as previously explained. A two percent raise is essentially a wash in their income against a healthcare increase. I'm proposing zero for the police as we have a contract negotiation coming up and feel we should be able to complete that over the next few weeks, knowing that contractual employees like the highway department get guaranteed raises while the general employees are up for discussion every year. Retirement. Retirement is actually going down due to more people getting hired at the higher tiers, which is a lower contribution rate for us, and the state is getting a better return on investments, meaning overall our contribution rate is less, saving us around twelve thousand dollars on the general and five thousand dollars on the highway department. Social services. Although technically we are not to be billed anymore for these costs come 2015, Ulster County Social Services billing cycle is from October to September annually. This means next year we will be responsible for October through December of this year. At approximately three thousand dollars a month, it is prudent to budget ten thousand dollars for next year. This will disappear off of next year's budget. I will also maintain the position of welfare officer next year at no cost to the town. Highway. Biggest increase is due to salt prices increasing nearly thirty percent. Also recognize the employees by contract are due two percent, plus we have the extra responsibility of the cemetery. Healthcare is up as well and retirement is down. We are transferring twenty-four thousand dollars in funds from the trucks line to pay the bond and interest on the recently purchased truck. This is clearly a transfer and does not increase or decrease the overall budget. Suit. Eric will have funds available for the cemetery to help offset some of the costs for its maintenance, and we hope to apply for grants to afford his new equipment to help with that maintenance. Phoenisha water. We are still awaiting final figures for the proposed pump installation for the district. I'm also waiting to hear how long the costs can be amortized. Last I knew, the rural water fund, we hope to apply to, is a three-year payback. If the project cost comes in around thirty thousand dollars as estimated by Rick, that means a ten thousand dollar plus interest payback each year for three years. Being a capital project, the monies must be received through taxes per the comptroller's office. This comes to almost a twenty-five percent tax increase for the district landowners. If we find that we can spread this over five years, it would make this a less dramatic increase, but I wouldn't suggest spreading this over a longer period than that. Pine Hill water. Superintendent Don Clark is going to his committee because he's just getting by in the water district. Non-payment of bills, outstanding balances, have a dramatic effect on his ability to operate because sometimes these monies don't come in until the bill rolls over to their taxes and he doesn't receive the monies until the following year. He's proposing a ten thousand dollar increase for the district to be split evenly between the water rents and the usage fees. This would require us to amend the district bylaws and hold public hearings. We'll have to wait to hear from the committee, to hear their thoughts, and the map on the breakdown of costs. The tax rate would remain the same as they continue paying back the original loan to create the district. Fire, lighting, libraries. All fire districts are proposing two percent increases. The lighting districts remain the same and the libraries are not pursuing any increase this year. Overall, general, with the changes, the general budget spending is down point eight-two percent, meaning the proposed spending is near twenty thousand dollars less than this year. The one hundred and two thousand dollar drop in non-taxable revenues is what creates a four point eight-eight increase on the tax levy. Highway, the spending is up three percent and the tax levy reflects the same, mostly due to contractual expenses in salt. Overall, the accountant is re-reviewing the figures, but assures me that we will not need to pass a resolution to exceed the tax cap. Understand that the tax cap calculations are complicated, but essentially, if you don't use up your cap space from previous years, then it is retained as reserve available cumulatively over a three-year span. So, because we had zero last year and one percent the year before, we have enough reserve space in cap space. To better explain the cumulative tax increase including the special districts, it is totaling roughly three point nine percent, which in turn translates to an increase of thirty-nine dollars in taxes if you paid a thousand dollars in town taxes last year, which of course is barring any change in your assessment. We have resolutions to first adopt the tentative budget as the preliminary budget tonight and to set up a public hearing for the final budget prior to next month's meeting on Wednesday, November 5th at six fifteen P.M. Zoning. The town is keeping open the public hearing for the proposed zoning map change in Pine Hill. The amendment is supported by the town planning board that simply change properties located on the south side of Main Street from residential to commercial, which mirrors the north side of Main Street, which is wholly zoned commercial. Think I got those backwards. And is more in line with the character of the existing structures and uses, end uses currently there. We have resolutions on this next month once we receive comment from the county. Shandaken sewer. The town has been contacted by the CWC that they are ready to move ahead to investigate the possibility of municipal sewage for the Hamlet of Shandaken. We're setting up special meeting for the residents of the Hamlet of, for the Hamlet and the town board to meet with the CWC and open the discussion of this issue. That meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 21st at six thirty here at the town hall. LFA. Along with the town engineers, we have scheduled two meetings concerning the local flood analysis project currently being undertaken by the town for the Hamlets of Phoenisha and Mount Trepper. I ask that if you are a resident of either of these Hamlets, please attend your respective meeting as the issues to be explored will be specific to your Hamlet and may affect your property. The Phoenisha meeting is set for Tuesday, October 14th at the parish hall at six thirty. Again, the Phoenisha meeting is Tuesday, October 14th at the parish hall at six thirty P.M., and the Mount Trepper meeting is set for Monday, October 20th at the Emerson at six thirty. Just to repeat, to be fair to Mount Trepper, their meeting is set for Monday, October 20th at the Emerson at six thirty. We have a resolution tonight to allow the board to attend these meetings and be involved in the discussions, but then no actions will be taken by the board at those meetings. Lastly, we have a resolution to set a public hearing for next month for a lodging permit for a regular forest maintenance project on Rose Mountain Road in Big Indian. This will be held at six forty-five prior to our next regular meeting. We also have our standard resolution setting the curfew for nine P.M. on Halloween night. One I did forget to mention in here, and was reminded by Joyce outside, we have a meeting on October 17th here at the town hall at ten thirty in the morning. This is concerning the sewer extension in Pine Hill. It's basically an informational session for all the residents that are about to be connected to the sewer project, as well as anybody that may have the necessity to know about traffic patterns on Route 28. There may be lane closures coming up with the excavation and construction to begin, so we've asked that police, ambulances, school are all in attendance to hear what they have to say about the closures of the road. With that, they're hoping to break ground shortly, actually, by the end of this month and start that project. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 5th. Remember, again, it's the day after Election Day as traditionally we hold it, and that public hearing will be at six fifteen P.M. With that, I'll ask the board if you have any other comments, communications?
I have one for the, if I can read it now, about the, yeah, the turkey trot's coming up on the 29th, I believe it is. Saturday, November 29th, and it will benefit the SDS Playhouse. But we also have injury prevention for runners. Four-week exercise class designed especially for current, specifically for current and potential runners looking to prevent injury and improve performance. We will focus on core and hip strengthening as well as lower body flexibility, specific to the running population. Whether you are training for a marathon or the Phoenisha Turkey Trot, this class is free to all, all you runners. Just join us Saturdays and November 1st, the 8th, the 15th, and the 22nd, from 8:00 to 9:00 A.M. at the Pine Hill Community Center. You'll be taught by Heather Roberts, the physical therapist. She wants you to bring a mat or blanket to cushion the floor, a belt or strap if you have one, to wear loose comfortable clothes. Join us for an informal community run from 7:00 to 8:00 A.M. from the community center, length to be determined by the group. For more questions, contact Heather at Heather Roberts, H-Roberts-P-T at gmail dot com. And again, those days are November 1st, 8th, 15th, and 22nd. Injury prevention.
Okay, upcoming town events, please get this short. Again, they're posted on website and in town on Main Street in Phoenisha. Catskills Lark Park is on all this week until next Monday. For more information, call 586-2611 or catskillslark.org online. Phoenisha Fishing Game has all-you-can-eat dinner fundraiser tomorrow night, 5:00 to 8:00. And their turkey shoot is Sunday, October 12th. The Fall Festival of Craft Pairs at Bel Air Ski Center, October 11th and 12th. Help heat the church ham dinner at the Shandaken Memorial Methodist Church, Saturday, October 18th. The Native American Concert at the Emerson Inn is on October 25th, noon to four. The very popular Duwop Dance at the Parish Hall, Phoenisha, Saturday, October 25th, 7:00 to 11:00 P.M. Pancake breakfast fundraiser for dog and meal is at the Shandaken Aladdin Firehouse, Sunday, October 26th, 8:00 to 11:00 A.M. Shandaken Animal Volunteer Effort will be hosting another Pet Portraits Day at town hall, Saturday, November 1st, 11:00 to 3:00 P.M. There will be another cat and dog rabies contemporary clinic on Saturday, November 15th, town hall, 10 to noon. And the Shandaken Deatrical, uh, Deatrical Society will be presenting the lady in question for two weeks starting November 1st. Call for reservation, 688-2279. And Phoenisha United Methodist Church will be hosting an election night dinner on Tuesday, November 4th, 4 to 7. And lastly, on Tuesday, September 30th, the second session was held for local citizens dedicated to the creation of the town of Shandaken Civilian Emergency Response Team, called SERP, with the goal of developing preparedness strategies in advance of any future disasters which may befall Shandaken. We want to and we need to be prepared for the next Irene-sized event. The meetings have been well-attended, but we need more help. We need folks to join our team and work within committees that are currently being developed. We need worker bees and we need leaders, at least in the following areas and perhaps more. One would be outreach to address citizens, sheltering, pet care, communications, volunteer coordination, and food supplies. Training is available and would be offered in these areas. If you're interested or you want more information, call the town clerk's office at 688-500-4. And the next move is the Red Cross is planning to come up in November to bring to Shandaken a training session on individual preparedness. The date in November is still to be determined. We need to know who is interested in attending the session, so we the session, so we know how many to prepare for. Please contact our office if you're interested. We will let all interested parties know when the date is determined. And that's it.
I think there was one more, there's a Thai feast coming up at the upstairs yard on October 25th at six thirty, and it's fifteen dollars a head for the Shandaken Demon Parrot. Yeah, Thai food parrot.